Another meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, October 18th, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please. Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Cordova?
Here.
Mayor Protam Jeremy Ball?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
We will now open the floor for oral communications regarding closed session. If you would like to speak on a closed session item, you may come to the podium for three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. Did we have any written communication, Madam Clerk?
No ma'am, nothing.
While we wait to see if there are any calls, we will read into the record the closed session items. We have one, item number one, we have two. Item number one is conference with real property negotiators, Government Code Section 54956.8, property approximately 82 acres, including adjacent to Ken Adam Park. Item number two is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, parentheses, D21 case. Seeing no one rise, no one call, and no written communications on these items, we will adjourn to closed session and return to open session at 6:30 PM. We will now reconvene the City of Lompoc Council meeting for October 18th, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you please call, roll? Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Cordova?
Here.
Mayor Protam Jeremy Ball?
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
Mr. Malave, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Mayor, the City Council met in closed session to discuss the two items on the agenda, one, real property negotiations, and one, significant exposure to litigation item. Staff and council discussed those items, but there was no reportable action.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Pastor Bernie to the podium for the invocation, and then join me in the pledge after.
Let us pray. Dear gracious and generous God, I'm honored to stand here and provide this invocation tonight. It's a time we can pause and remember that life really is not all about us, it's about you, and those we call family and friends and neighbors, and those you allow us to partner with to add value to one another and to this great community. You have been good to us, and we say thank you. It's easy, for me, maybe some others, to complain and to whine, but it's better to give you thanks and appreciate each day that we are given and all the blessings that we receive. May we never take these for granted, and especially the amazing people that you've placed around us. I give you thanks for our leaders who sit before us tonight, and often make difficult decisions each and every day. I thank you for their hearts and their minds to collaborate, and they have been doing so with forward impact to our city and the quality of life. From public safety to our parks, to cleaning things up, to new businesses, we are grateful. And while we have a long way to go, we ask you to provide wisdom, creative ideas through our leaders, our city management, and all our employees, and each of us who call Lompoc home. I also ask that you would provide resources and favor for local businesses, that they would not just survive, but that they would thrive. And during this meeting, may the words of all who speak be done with a heart of honoring one another and honoring a spirit of unity. So God, watch over our community, be with those in need this night, and may we be an extension of your love and kindness to one another. Watch over all our employees of our city, keep them safe and healthy and strong, and protect those in public safety service willing to go into harm's way for us and assist our citizens in some of their most difficult times. May your hand of grace be upon us all, we pray, in faith, hope, and love. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll have a presentation from Savvy Health Services to our community in the council tonight. Erin, please come to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Erin Schugart. I'm the Executive Director at Savvy Health Free Clinic, and I would like to provide a community update. We've been open for four months now. Savvy Health Free Clinic opened in June of this year. Our mission is to provide primary, preventive, and behavioral health care services to people without health insurance in the greater Lompoc Valley. Savvy is located at 1111 East Ocean Avenue, Number Two in Lompoc. We're open Fridays, Saturdays, and alternate Wednesdays of each week, half-day on Wednesdays. We're the only free health clinic in Santa Barbara County. Savvy Health Free Clinic in Lompoc was established to address the health care provider shortage that exists in this community, as well as the fact that this community is considered to be medically underserved. Dr. Norristani, who opened the Sloan-Norr Foundation Free Clinic in San Luis Obispo over a decade ago, saw the need through his work as a hospitalist at Lompoc Valley Medical Center. Our primary goals for our first few years are twofold. First, to increase awareness and to address the inequities in health care access and quality in the Lompoc Valley, and to provide high-quality health care services to address the underserved populations' health care needs, many of which have been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Savvy's current services include primary and limited acute care, and we cover the costs of labs and imaging for our patients, including mammograms for women. Savvy is offering behavioral health care services, including resource and referral to appropriate community agencies, and short-term counseling. We have two licensed clinical social workers, one of whom is bilingual. Our staff includes myself. I'm four-fifths time, or 80% time. We have a half-time clinical manager, and we have two other .2 FTE staff, meaning one day a week, a medical assistant, and a brand-new nurse practitioner. So the majority of the folks who are participating in the operation of Savvy Health are volunteers, and they're volunteer medical providers from this community, for which we're grateful. In the four months that we've been open, we've been very busy. We've seen over 180 patients. Many of these individuals have been seen more than once, they've been seen twice, or three times, or four times. Eighty-seven percent of the patients that we've seen this far are residents of Lompoc. There's a few others who are from Santa Maria and the San Ynez Valley, but we're serving mainly Lompoc residents. Many of those that we're seeing are people who do not speak English, they're monolingual, Spanish-speaking. Many are agriculture workers. I think they... Many are responsible for the wonderful strawberries that we eat and we enjoy, that are, I think, our primary crop in this community, Santa Barbara County at least. And many have not seen a physician in many years, some up to 20 years. Patients who may not be documented are frequently reluctant to seek care at a clinic that requests proof of income. Savvy Health's only criteria for those becoming a patient is not having health insurance, and we require no proof of income. Just to speak about the types of conditions that we're treating people for, the most common, as you might guess, are high blood pressure, high cholesterol. However, we've been seeing a large number of people being treated for mental health issues, as we all know, I think, in our community, in our nation. Those are, have been sort of on the rise with the COVID-19 pandemic, so we're very happy that we're able to help address those. In the patients that we're seeing at Savvy, we're treating folks who have gastrointestinal disorders, we're treating women's health, and we've diagnosed some cases of cancer. And we are funded entirely by grants and donations. We never charge a fee for our services. I want to mention that there are an estimated 20,000 people in central and northern Santa Barbara County who do not have health insurance, and some of these include children. So we, Savvy Health, are available to treat these people, and I really just want the community to know that. And again, we'll never charge a fee for our services. We do have a luncheon coming up on November 30th. If anybody is interested in learning more about our services, please visit our website, savvy, S-A-V-I-E, health.org. And that is the end of my presentation. I really thank everybody for your time and for listening. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Does any of the council have a question? Councilmember Ball?
I just wanted to say thank you for enlightening us to the services that you all provide. I've visited a couple times and learned about some of the nuanced issues that you guys deal with, and something that really was highlighted to me, that really helped me understand how it can help our community as a whole, is taking some of the impact or the compaction that happens at the hospital with the ER sometimes. And for those of us, I have parents that live in town, and if they have a traumatic issue, or my dad has a heart attack, they're going to go to that ER. And in the worst-case scenario, if they are overwhelmed at the ER with people that are seeking medical care there versus going to a doctor, it can become an issue. So can you elaborate on that, or that specific intent, or how maybe the hospital and you guys are working together?
Absolutely. That is definitely a part of it, and one of the ER doctors is on our board. You can visit our website, and you can see who our board members are, but I can just provide an example from this past Friday. Someone was in the ER, I believe on Thursday evening. I don't know what the circumstances were, but the person needed to have a lot of stitches, like on the inside of their nose. So they had a laceration, a moderately severe laceration on their nose, inside their nose. And so they needed to have stitches removed, and the ER sent that patient over to us at Savvy. Because we're open Saturdays, we've been able to treat, you know, a variety of issues where people, you know, maybe they would go to the public health department, but the public health department isn't available. And that's why I shared that we are available to provide some urgent care services. However, really, the majority of what our focus is, is primary preventative health care, as well as behavioral health care.
I'd answer your question. Councilmember Cordova?
I just want to say thank you. I am humbly grateful to Dr. Norristani, the board, staff, and all the volunteers at Savvy Health for having brought this to our community and having diagnosed the need in our community for these types of services. I visited your facility, took a tour, and I just, I can't say thank you enough because I know the need that we have in this community, and I feel blessed to even be able to have something like this in our backyard, so thank you.
Well, you're welcome, and I have to say I'm very grateful to be a part of Savvy Health. I feel very honored to be able to do that.
Well, I echo our council members in that, and appreciate the time and investment that goes into it. For those of us that can support this, is there a path to donate in order to support the organization?
So just taking a look at our website, visiting our website, there's absolutely the opportunity, and our luncheon on November 30th is going to be our Holiday Hope Luncheon, which is absolutely free of charge to attend, however, we must receive an RSVP in advance. There will be an ask to donate, and guests may contribute should they feel so inspired at the level they feel inspired to give. So thank you for that very much. I really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you for, again, for doing the hard work.
Of course. Thank you. Good night.
City Manager, what do you have to tell us?
Yeah, one thing I always like to do is showcase our employees. I'm going to try again. We tried doing this video before, but I think it's worth trying again. This is something that 1-805 puts together. They help raise funds for our public safety throughout the county, and so we'll play it now.
When I was 20, I ended up switching my education. I wanted to be a biology teacher, and I changed it to criminal justice. I just tried to figure out what would be most fitting for me and my personality, and what I could do for the community that I'm working for. In my first semester in criminal justice, I absolutely loved the classes, so I knew immediately I wanted to be a police officer. You know, I really just want to make a difference. I want to work close with the community. I want to go out in the community and want to help them, I want to protect them, I want to serve them. No, that's my duty. Being in the dispatch role, I was answering the night-walk calls, and I was talking to everybody on the phone. And now I get to talk to them one-on-one in person, and I like that interaction with the community. I'm so honored to work here, and I absolutely love it. I love being a police officer. I can't see myself doing anything else. Me switching from being a dispatcher to a law enforcement officer, that was the best decision I have ever made for my career.
I just always wanted to do a job where I got the gratification of helping someone. That alone has just been a huge driving factor for me. Been sworn officer for about five weeks now. Our department has a SWAT team. I would love to get on that. I just love tactics, and I love that small-team aspect of that. I also would love to hopefully one day be a gang detective. Unfortunately, a lot of these kids, they don't have sports, they don't have that backbone that they need at home. They need people to just be there, be that moral support, and help them, just be that moral compass to guide them. We deal with all kinds of different calls, just a normal keep the peace to sometimes the worst things you can imagine, and just being able to talk to people, that's huge. You don't want to come off, that's hard, but being able to be there and just treat them like a normal person, it makes that relationship so much better.
I'm an officer for the Lompoc Police Department, and I've been an officer for the Lompoc Police Department for three weeks now. I was born in Santa Maria, born and raised there. My father is an architect, and then my mom was a stay-at-home mother. Especially in the city of Lompoc, there is a lot of Spanish-speaking people, and I feel like I have a good bond with them because they feel comfortable, like, oh, she's a female officer, and she can speak Spanish, which is kind of rare. I love the city. I love that it's always busy. Every call is not the same, it's always something different. It excites me. It excites me in the sense where it's like, I'm doing the thing I've always wanted to do. It's definitely a good feeling knowing where you make another person feel safe. Bonding with people in the community is humbling, and it's comforting to me knowing that, hey, you know, this person isn't mad at me just because I'm in uniform. I'm a regular person, too. I've had a great time with, you know, the people that are training me because they show that they care. They want to see you succeed. Even though I'm new to the department, I already feel part of a family, and that's really important to me.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to the officers for doing that. I really appreciate it and letting us get to know them. That's all I have.
Anyone have any questions for City Manager before we move on? All right. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. If you would like to speak to an item on the Consent Calendar, you're welcome to come to the podium for three minutes. If you would like to call in and comment on Consent Calendar, the number to call is Madam Clerk, did we receive any written comments for Consent Calendar?
No ma'am, nothing.
While we wait to see if there are any calls, I'll go ahead and read in to record the procedure. All items under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one call in, we'll go ahead and close public comment on Consent Calendar and bring it back to council for questions or motion. Councilmember Cordova? Motion to approve Consent Calendar.
I'll second.
And Councilmember Vega seconded that. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. Moving on, we will now have a staff presentation from our Parks and Recs Division about our project status report.
Tonight, we are going to run through... Tonight, we're going to run through these specific projects or project sites, and just discuss what open items that we currently have. Our first site we're going to talk about is Thompson Park. I'm happy to inform you that construction mobilization is going to begin in two weeks, the beginning of November. Once we are mobilized on the site, we're going to roll, we're going to start doing the site demolition. The materials and equipment that are slated for this project have all been ordered, and we are anticipating to receive these items at the end of November. Our targeted construction completion date for this site would be January of 2023. The second site we're going to discuss this evening is the Lompoc Aquatic Center. We actually have three work items for this particular site. The first item that we're going to talk about is the pool heater replacement for competition and therapy pool areas. The equipment specifications and product submittals have been submitted to the Santa Barbara County Public Health Department for review, approval, and permit issuance. We do have a tentative construction start date for December 29th. However, I am pushing on this vendor to see if we can't move that up a little bit. If we maintain that December 29th construction date, we will be pushing to finish this and have this site reopen, ready to go at the beginning of 2023, after our annual maintenance period for this facility. The other two work items that we have are the ceiling panel replacement and the dehumidification system improvements. Both of these contracts have been awarded, and we are, we don't have a specific target construction date yet, but this, these projects will be rolled into 2023. What we're finding is I have not received a firm delivery date of this equipment from our vendors yet. So once we get a more confirmed date of delivery for the mechanical equipment, we can set up a construction schedule that fits with the events and activities that go on at this The next project that we're going to discuss is the Ryan Park Pickleball Project. We have received some cost estimates, but the design and cost estimating process is still ongoing. I have conducted a few pickleball community meetings to update our community members, and they have, we have had a good response from our community members for this, and they are very excited about this project. We have received some cost estimates for the new LED lighting that's planning to go in, and I have met with electrical contractors on-site to discuss their scope of work. We are still targeting eight new pickleball courts in this lower field, which you can see, you can't see on the screen, but we are targeting to have eight new pickleball courts installed. However, we will determine that final court determination once we receive the cost, and we can make a judgment to see what's feasible for this project. Staying on Ryan Park, this is for our playground replacement. On September 15th, the city received an award notification of matching funds from Game Time for a new national demonstration site playground at Ryan Park. We have a site walk with a Game Time Great Western Recreation Representative scheduled for next Monday, October 24th. After this site walk, a conceptual design will be generated and distributed for discussion. One other item I would like to discuss for Ryan Park is a staff report for the performance stage. I am planning to present the staff report at the November 15th City Council meeting. The next site we're going to take a look at is JM Park. Here, we are focused on the existing restroom concession stand facility that is scheduled to be demolished and replaced. We are currently working with Public Restroom Company to finalize a PO and begin fabrication. The facility fabrication lead time is currently eight months, so we have a target facility install around July of next year. However, as you know, this site is heavily used, and we will coordinate that installation with the activities going on at that site. There is going to be some substantial demolition of the existing structure, and also installation of new infrastructure, which includes water lines, sewer line, et cetera. College Park, here we are looking to redo our skate park, but also add a new playground element and other site amenities for the community. We had a construction drawing kickoff meeting, it took place here at City Hall on September 13th. This meeting was open to the community. Our project designer, R.J., was in attendance, as well as representatives from Spawn Ranch Skate Park Design. We had about 30 residents from our community attend, and they provided us some really good feedback. The focus of that meeting, though, was strictly on the skate park design itself. So right now, our skate park designer is working on modifying the layout. The layout you see here is just a conceptual. He's taken the feedback that we received from the community members and implementing that in a new design. We're looking to have a new, our next targeted public meeting for this would be in mid-November, and we're looking to see what would be the best approach, whether it be more of an online survey-type meeting, or another meeting here at City Hall. Currently, working on generating RFP packages for the remaining items in the park, meaning the playground area, basketball court, seating, and restroom area. So as a whole, we're looking to bring this project back together for community input probably sometime in January of next year to get a final conceptual. Once the final conceptual has been decided upon, then we'll roll into the construction drawing phase. Our, we have a projected start date for this project would be June of next year, and it's slated to have a 12-month construction period. During my last presentation on September 6th, a request was made for an update on the work activities performed at the parking lot at Beatty Park. These next few slides will run through those work activities. First, we're going to start with the few before pictures, and then we'll roll into the after. But in this picture, you can see what kind of damage was done to the hillsides, the ground squirrel population. This picture is just an example of the damage that was done by the burrowing by these ground squirrels. To address this, our city Parks Maintenance Crew utilized our burrow blocker equipment, and that started in February of this year. This treatment was completed in June. Here's a picture of that same hill slope after the burrow blocker treatment. In addition to the burrow blocker, we contracted with Clark Pest Control to address our ground squirrel population. Their work efforts were for one day a week, typically for about three to four hours a day, and the duration was for six weeks. Currently, we're doing an evaluation to see the effectiveness of this, but we have seen a great reduction in the ground squirrel and gopher population. So we're currently evaluating to see if it makes sense to issue another contract to Clark, and if so, it'll probably be sometime prior to the spring of next year. Here's a slide of our grounds crew, our maintenance crew, cleaning up the site, which started shortly after the completion of Clark's contract. Looking at the before and after condition, I feel that our Parks Maintenance Crew did a really good job out there cleaning up the site and addressing the needs of this area. However, you can see in this slide here, the burrow blocker, although it was very effective, there are certain areas that kind of call for a different type of... there are certain areas that kind of call for a different type of treatment or different type of approach. To properly address this issue, a permanent solution, I feel, is necessary to address the slope areas of these parking areas. As you can see in this photo, new burrows have already started to reform, and what's, it's causing some damage, not only to the hillside, but also to the asphalt parking areas as well. What I've proposed to install is called a rock blanket, and this rock blanket is a solution to resolve, not, it's a permanent solution to deter the burrowing, but also to preserve the soil from erosion, assist in reduction of ongoing site maintenance, and add to the element of beautification for this area. I have coordinated with my Parks Maintenance Supervisor and our City Public Works Division to discuss the viability of this install and receive their recommendation to proceed. So, looking ahead, Parks Division is evaluating target areas for this specific application, quantifying area square footage, estimating costs, and generating design details for RFP documents. This will probably be an ongoing thing that I'll need to update the City Council at the next meeting, just to kind of let you know the specific areas that we are targeting, what, what square footage is we are looking at, and potential cost, if that is available at that time. But this will probably be more of an ongoing thing that will be, I'll be updating you guys on. That was it for there?
All right, Jason, here come the questions. Ready? Councilmember Starbuck.
I know how difficult it is to relocate squirrels. Thank you for that. Where's Pioneer Park? I thought we got a million-dollar federal, a million-plus grant.
I can answer that. That's true. I can answer that, Jason. We have not, as far as I know, we have not received any notification of that. What I'm doing here is just updating you on projects that are moving forward and giving you a status of where we are with those projects.
I'm curious, because this is coming down the pipe.
Yep.
And we're talking a significant amount of money. There was two sources of funding on this, if I recall correctly.
I can, I can answer that if you want.
Sure.
That was a direct appropriation, and Congress approved it, but the, we still, they still haven't passed through the Senate, and then the budget hasn't been passed, so they're in continued resolution, so we're still on a holding pattern.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, that's the federal government. I hope they don't, I hope they're on continued resolution until June like they were last year.
Yeah. So, we're dependent upon this federal money for Pioneer Park. We did not do anything?
Yes, sir.
City ARPA, anything for Pioneer Park?
No, that's all federal direct appropriations, and it'll be good. I hope it pans out.
So, Bay Ruth is just hanging, then?
Yeah. Unfortunately, yes.
Councilmember Wall.
I just want to say thank you, Jason. Just having you make this presentation makes a lot more sense of why Kristi and some of those were anxious to get you back onboard in Lompoc. I appreciate your strategic focus on getting some of these projects to the finish line, and as I had a quick conversation with you, the most important thing is not just accomplishing these great things, but making sure that we, as a council and as staff, we figure out how to maintain and sustain the quality of these parks when they're upgraded. So, I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work, and let us know how we can continue to support you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, I don't know which one of you turned your lights on first. All right, Councilmember Vega.
Doesn't matter.
You've got the floor.
Thank you. Jason, when you guys order equipment and material, you know, for the parks and stuff, does it come from different vendors? Because it must be very difficult to have a delivery date on equipment and stuff, because it doesn't seem like you would just use one vendor for everything, or is, I'm just, it's a question, okay?
Yeah.
Because it'd be pretty difficult to know if all the play, playground equipment is going to come in at once, or, you get what I'm saying? So, I'm not sure how you coordinate that.
I, I really have to defer to our purchasing staff as far as the purchasing of items. Most of the things that we have, we have to go out to bid for.
Okay.
So, it's, it's kind, it has to go through a bid process, so we could get different vendors each time.
That's a great answer. I mean, I just wanted people to understand a little bit about the process, you know? So, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cordova.
I just want to say thank you to staff for taking these projects on. When I started on council, I never thought we would even get this far. I didn't even think we could mow our lawns at the parks. And so, it was really frustrating, because even when we would talk about grants, it was always something along the lines of, well, we can't match funds, so we can't apply, or we will never, you know? And I think that when you see a council that is united and is willing to work together, it, not only is it reflective and motivational to staff, but we're able to work together and get the job done. And I think a lot of it had to do, too, with the transition of the Parks and Rec to a different, you know, division and to a different department. And I think that what I see now is, is a revitalization of our parks. It's not 100% yet, but I can't see a stopping. And so, I thank you guys very much, and I thank the council for working together with staff and giving them the tools and the means to be able to make this stuff happen. So, thank you to all.
Thank you. We really appreciate your support, too.
You know, great first steps. You know, what a way to come back to work and be able to jump fully into not just one, but multiple projects. Starting way back when, on the Economic Development Committee, one of the biggest issues that was brought to our attention and was an ongoing discussion for multiple years at College Park, at the skate park, was lights. And I see it on this, but I think it's really important to make sure the community understands that part of this upgrade is a lighted park. And so, I just wanted you to be able to speak to that, like LED lighting at the other parks, that the goal is to make sure that as we modernize each of these parks, we're modernizing the lighting. And I know that Beatty Park has had some new lights installed, so you can already see the types of LED lights that we're looking to get into Ryan, and then hopefully, I'm assuming, at College Park. But I think that's been a big concern, but also because this park would be more utilized even, even after dark with, with the lighting, so I just wanted you to speak to that a little bit.
Sure. Yes, College Park is definitely going to have new lighting, not only just focused in on the skate park, but also in on the surrounding park area itself. Administratively, we're going to be discussing what hours those lights will be on from when to when. Typically, it's all on a controller. There's a lot of new technology where you can have the lights on at night. With motion sensors, they can dim down to a certain percentage, so they're not burning, you know, at 100%. But when somebody walks through or somebody is there utilizing it, it'll reilluminate to 100%, and then after a certain period, when there's nobody there, it'll drop back down. So, those are all things that we are exploring and taking a look at. Of course, it, it adds to cost of the project. So, we're looking to see what's, what's best for each site, but the capability is there.
That's awesome, and I think, I think utilizing the lights in a strategic way so that it reduces the cost, but also provides that safety, so that if somebody walks into the area at 1:00 a.m. and the lights go on because they're, they're triggered by motion, that, that's awesome, because after making these investments, one of the things the community is going to look for us to do is maintain those. And maintenance isn't sexy, but it's what we're dealing with in a lot of these scenarios of making sure these last for a really long time. So, I, along with the rest of the council, are really excited about what we're already seeing being done and look forward to seeing the additional results and, and keeping us informed as to what you need. And thanks for thinking outside the box on the squirrel issue.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We will now move forward to the oral communications. This is for any item not currently on the agenda under the city's purvey. So, if you'd like to speak to an item, come forward. You have your three minutes. If you'd like to call in, it's 805-875-8201. Once again, this is general oral communications for anything not on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm David Hutspeth, and I'm representing New California State as a entity. We came here today not just to read this declaration that you have received. This is an introduction to you of a movement that was established and declared independence in January 15th, 2018. We have read over nine, 190 grievances of complaint in the public square advising the public of criminal actions of the current monoparty government and now based on executive actions for the last 1,000 days as proclaimed a dictatorship. We, the people, have proposed to stop the reign of the dictatorial power through the peaceable means of establishing a true republican form of government called the state of New California, providing the citizens with representative form of government as the founding fathers had originally intended. The following is a reading provided further information and will identify some of the current issues that are plaguing citizens of this city, county, state, and even the nation as a whole. For our cancer knows no boundaries and spoils whatever or wherever it takes hold. Your oath of office should not be taken lightly or discarded at the earliest convenient moment when no one is looking. It is a solemn common commitment and deserves your utmost respect and adherence. For you are servants of we, the people, and as such, should give careful heed to the warning of the founding fathers and the legacy of the Constitution. America is a republic, not a democracy. A republic is ruled by individual liberty. Democracy is ruled by mob of people. Do not confuse the two words. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for the opportunity to address this body. This is not the final address, and you will hear from us. The evidence is, so the declaration is declaration of disloyalty. The evidence is now clear, and patterns and acts of disloyalty are on full display daily against we, the people, California, and we, the people of the United States, not only on the federal level, but on the state and local level, as well from city council, county board of supervisors, school boards, which have become hotbeds of open sedition and disloyalty against all of the constituents and constitutions of the United States. Thank you. This concludes my reading.
Thank you.
I continue to read. We, the people of California, cannot rely upon a legal and just election system in the state of California, which is supported by overwhelming evidence of fraudulent elections that have destroyed our republican form of government. To be sure, the California State Legislature, whose duty it is to legislate and ensure and conduct our free and fair elections, has worked in conjunction with the state executive and instituted wherever their usurped power extends, a reign of terror intended to suppress the free expression, the free expression of the will of the people, making elections a mockery and a fraud. The evidence of disloyalty to the United States Constitution is obvious. Therefore, the California State Legislature has no constitutional authority to conduct negotiations with we, the people of California. Therefore, the disloyal legislature, executive, and judiciary have shown clear and convicting evidence to we, the people of California, of their vacating and abandoning their fraudulently elected and appointed offices. This is evidence of the abdication of their responsibilities of authority and sovereignty over the citizens of the United States living in California State. Thus, the California Legislature, executive, and judiciary have been committing acts of insurrection and secession against the United States Constitution and all of the states and the United Union of States and all United States citizens. Therefore, those previously fraudulently elected to the disloyal California Legislature, Assembly, and Senate under the California State Constitution of 1879, and all the subsequent amendments and propositions are deemed disqualified from the office effective September 9, 2022. Consistent with we, the people of California default notification issued on September 9, 2022, those disloyal elected and appointed to the executive branch and judiciary are to be deemed disqualified from the office effective September 9, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a continuation. Constitutional restrictions make it necessary for the formation of a loyal government of California to the United States Constitution and the Union of States as proclaimed by compact by the United States Congress on September 9, 1850. Therefore, a legislature who is unquestioned loyalty to the United States Constitution and the Union of States is the only legislature who could then give permission for the creation of a new state. Therefore, the disloyal legislature, executive, and judiciary have shown clear and convincing failures to not abide by their oaths of office, and it is recognized that their own actions have created irreconcilable breaches, making separation inevitable, in, I'm sorry, inevitable. Today, California is in a state of freefall at all levels. This freefall has been orchestrated over the last 170 years by socialists and communists, and we're now nearing the end of their socialist communist plan that clearly demonstrates a design to reduce United States citizens living in California under the absolute deppisism. Today, this plan has eliminated the three branches of government, created a monoparty legislature, which has enabled and empowered the rise of puce lamesse governor-turned-dictator. For those who don't understand the United States Constitution, the government is we, the people. In New California State, we echo the thoughts, convictions, principles, and ideals of the founders of the United States of America. We, the people, will retain our humanity, our natural and unalienable rights and our autonomy, free from the shackles of slavery to any form of government. The overt nature of their totalitarian lust for control of every aspect of the lives of we, the people, is now openly on display. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there was a caller? Mr. Frank, there's a caller, and then you can have the floor.
Hello?
Hello, good evening. You're live in the Lompoc City Council Chamber. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Terry Doughtney. I don't know what that was before me. California in a state of freefall? That's open to interpretation. I do not believe it is. Anyway, that's not the reason for my call. The reason I called was to thank the City Council for all the work they've done on the parks. Looks like we're going to get some major improvements in our parks this year and next year, and I really appreciate all the hard work that has gone into it so far and continues to need to be going to it. The gopher holes look wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. I really appreciate it, and the city appreciates it, too. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that the only call? Mr. Frank, if you wanted to come to the podium?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm, I'm not batting cleanup. I think I'm, there's a couple, there's someone else behind me. But I've been a member, I've been, I've lived in Lompoc for about two years or so. I'm the founder and CEO of Pell Bugat Ventures. We're the guys who were developing the space center at the Ken Adams Park. Just a couple admin things, so, and quick highlight. So, on the 30th of September, we gave a letter to the city manager, which addressed our, our capital requirements of MOU number 3C1. On the 10th of October, they asked for some more information. We gave them some more information on the 10th of October, including bank statements and some other things, including a check for $22,000 to top up the MOU security requirement. But really, what I want to highlight is we've got our design team coming in town this week. They'll be here out of Orlando, and also the design architect out of Orange County to give community project updates. So, we'd like to invite the, the general public to come to that. It's 20 through 23 October, that's Thursday through Sunday, at the Stone Pine Hall, which is next to the museum, which is at H in Cypress. is next to the museum, which is at H in Cypress. And we're there from 6:30 in the morning until 9 o'clock at night, but not every single hour, so you really need to check on the schedule. If you want to get on the schedule or come, send an email to admin@paleblue ventures.com or go to the Eventbrite. I'll put some flyers out shortly, and everyone that comes will get a free gift, which is a coffee cup. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb Andrews, Lompoc. I want to first thank the staff person that gave the Parks and Rec report. Very concise, informative, and professional. Thank you. What great information about the upgrade of our parks. I was at Ryan and Beatty. I'm glad to report there's soap and toilet paper in the restrooms. Couple of the drinking fountains still don't work. I look forward to those being repaired. A lot of other work is going on and is recognized. Thank you. Citizens at this podium asked for pickleball courts. I'm glad to see that they will have new pickleball courts. I was very disappointed when I went to Ryan Park to see that there is a sign, there are signs on all the tennis courts that say, "For tennis only." That anyone in violation playing something other than tennis will be fined. And then there's an exclamation point. Welcome to Lompoc. The signs you put up speak volumes. Tennis only, violators will be fined. For a short period of time, pickleball players were able to play pickleball on those same courts. They painted the pickleball lines sideways on the tennis courts. Now the signs say, "Tennis only." I complained about the pickleball signs when they first went up and the stripes, the lines were put on the courts because they had a lot of nonsense. You can't, if you cough or sneeze, or there's too many people, you know, you can't do that. A bunch of COVID stuff on the signs. I complained about that. I testified criticizing those signs. New signs on the tennis courts speak volumes to people that look at them, that come to Lompoc. More nonsense will not, we will not comply. The courts belong to us. There's a lot of poor kids that live in that area. What if they wanted to play badminton? It's a net, it's a flat service, surface. Fauci, Burks, Newsom, and many more have been executed for their COVID mandates, among other heinous crimes. We still have a box of masks on the table in the lobby. This city government is in violation of our constitution. This city government is totalitarian. Totalitarianism is a form of government that prohibits all opposition, outlaws individual and group opposition to the state, and exercises a high degree of control and regulation over public and private life. I urge you to vacate your position and stand down.
Seeing no one else rise and no one else call, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council. And the agenda, our next item is item number four, city council appointments to the Human Service Commission and the Youth Commission. Let's do the Youth Commission first. On the Youth Commission, we have one applicant, Janelle Lynn Belrose. We have several terms available. I'm looking for a nomination for Janelle Lynn, along with the appropriate position and term. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move that we appoint to the term ending of 1/2024.
All right, so one of the associate terms ending 1/2024. I have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor? And that passes 5-0. We'll move on to the Human Service Commission. We have several positions available on this one. Let's begin with the position for District 2. Mr. Vega, you have an applicant, Mr. Hill, who has served before and would like to return. Would you like to appoint him?
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and appoint Mr. Hill to the Human Services Commission.
All right, can I, Councilmember Ball?
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. The next position is actually for, it's a District 1, and so what I'd like to do is postpone this appointment with the favor of Councilmember Ball, whose position is open. My current appointee is District 4, and what I'd like to do is open that position back up, and my applicant from District 4 will apply. And at November 1st, Councilmember Ball can then appoint Ms. Pamela Kimmlinger, because she still wants to serve, and you'd have direct representation with your district. And I will appoint Mr. Balsina at that point from my at-large position for District 1. But we have to do this because we require our position to be open for 10 days. And so in order to clean this up and make sure the district representation is done, we need to reopen it, and that gives us an opportunity with great hopes, because we can still accept applications, and I would love to see some applications from District 3, because Mr. Starbuck has an open position. The reason we can take that time is the first meeting that needs to happen for the Human Service Commission is the first meeting in December, because they will begin their process, and I would love for our community to have 100% representation. So if Councilmember, so Ball, so nods ahead of approval, agrees with that plan, great.
Great, thank you.
I would love that. Any questions from council regarding that plan? All right, any concerns?
I have another question, but I'll wait till you.
Okay, all right. So do we need a vote to move it to the first and move on that plan, or just, we're just postponing it to the November 1st?
You don't need a vote.
Okay. So I saw all the head nods and agreement with that, and then I will turn it back to Mr. Vega for Q and A.
Yeah, Mayor, I just, for the public, I just like a little clarification on the term ending in 12, 2022, okay? So anybody that's appointed here, just, it will be a carryover, so to speak, okay? I mean, I just want to make sure that's clear, because people may be wondering why appoint somebody with such a short term. So if you could clarify how that works.
Absolutely. It's really important that we appoint for a short term, and then because Councilmember Vega is running unopposed, he will make his appointments and reconfirm them in January. So Mr. Hill has the opportunity to continue serving and most likely will, given he is interested in such a short-term window. And the importance of it for this particular commission is that we have sent out our notification of funding availability to all our local nonprofits from the Human Service Commission. The Human Service Commission's biggest role is to take the money that the council sets aside and matches to the CDBG funds that come in specifically for this, and to review the applications beginning in December, and then make decisions and issue that recommendation, which comes back before council in the early spring for us to confirm. So this particular commission's biggest role begins in December. So having a fully-staffed commission with representation from all of the districts makes sure that we make the best decisions on behalf of our local nonprofits with that funding that is now open and available. And at the close of this meeting, we'll make sure one of us reads off the requirements so that all the nonprofits know about it. So thanks for asking for that clarification, and I know that you will happily reappoint Mr. Hill come January. Any other questions from the council before we move forward? All right, seeing none, thank you so very much for letting us do that cleanup next meeting. All right, new business. Item number five, introduction of ordinance number 1700, parentheses 22, amending Title 15 of the Lompoc Municipal Code to adopt and amend the latest editions of the California Building Standards Code and adopting findings of facts to support impositions of requirements other than those of the California Building Standards Codes. And we have our building official, Mr. Eric Hagan, and our battalion chief and fire marshal, Dina Pasky, to make the presentation of these updates.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, staff, and our community. My name is Dina Pasky, fire marshal, and this is Eric Hagan, our building official, and we're here tonight for just the introduction of some of the amendments to the 2022 Building and Fire Codes. And at the conclusion of our presentation, we'll be available for any questions or clarifications or anything the council may wish. And we're going to do a kind of a tag-team approach here on our slides. So tonight, we're going to cover a brief agenda of our purpose of why we're here, our primary goals, also the fire codes, the building codes, and then a real quick summary and recap. So it's a little small, so I'll read it for you. The state of California, for our purpose tonight, it revises the 12 codes regulating the building throughout the California state every three years. The city amends those regulations to better serve our local community. Tonight, we're introducing these amendments necessary to protect our city. One of the biggest challenges that faces Lompoc is our isolation from other towns, and more specifically, their resources that could come help us. Based on the local climatic, geographical, and topographic conditions present both here in the city and around the city, we make some amendments to the code in order to tailor them more specifically to our needs here and for the life safety of our community. So our primary goal is to protect our city from known hazards resulting from the built environment. And the term "built environment," this is basically the physical makeup of where we live, where we learn, we work, and we play. Our homes, our schools, our businesses, our streets, et cetera, is covered in this. It is also more than just the four walls you may think when you're building a building. We have to access the sites, such as roads or parking that could be in the way of our access. Streets need to be wide enough so you can not only access with emergency traffic and vehicles, we can evacuate. Simple things like addresses, so we can even find you when there is an emergency or we need to deliver a service. And finally, site plans, overall resilience are why we're here to help tailor our community specifically. And now I'll turn over the next slide to our building official.
Thank you, Dina. Honorable Mayor Osborne, members of the council, good evening. Resiliency, good term. It is with resiliency in mind that the Building and Safety Division addresses the various codes that pertain specifically to buildings. First, I'd like to give a broader picture of...
Yeah.
Shorter the better.
All right, we'll bring the meeting back to order. I want to apologize to those that are listening remotely or watching remotely. We had a medical emergency in council chambers, and we needed to take a recess to address that issue. I want to thank the first responders in the room, the first responders that arrived for addressing the issue. It is moving forward with resolve, and the individual is safe at this moment. So we are now going to go back to our regularly scheduled program and hand it back over to our building official and let you have the floor again.
Thank you, Mayor Osborne, members of the council. So I began with the resiliency question. This is certainly what both Dina and I try to get in, in the built environment in town. It's with resiliency in mind that the Building and Safety Division applies the various codes that pertain specifically to buildings. First, let me give you just a brief picture of California codes. The fire code is Part 9 out of actually 12 parts to the California Building Standards Code. The Building Division administers and applies the other 11 codes, which is up here, administrative, building, residential, electrical, mechanical, plumbing. Energy code, historic building code, existing building code, green building standards code, and the reference standards code. It's a small amount of volumes of information we have to support. These are the codes, just the look of them this year. They changed the color on them near to here, so we can tell the difference. And it's available to the public at any time. We keep them on file here. It's open to the general public, and of course, we try to help where we can so that they can understand the codes. Portions, many portions of the code are based on codes published by the International Code Council, the ICC, and they're consistent nationwide. Every state has adopted some form of them. In fact, there's been adoption of the ICC, or International Building Code, in other, many other parts of the world. With input from fire and code officials across the country, these codes are updated every three years. The building code we're presenting for adoption, for instance, is based on the 2021 International Building Code. California state agencies then take the code, such as the Building Standards Commission, State Fire Marshal's Office, Housing and Community Development, Department of the State Architect, and they modify these codes with California amendments and add a whole additional layer to things. These baseline codes are kind of the basis for the building, residential, electrical, mechanical, plumbing codes, and the fire code. And so also, the state adopts four codes that are written in Sacramento essentially, and that's the energy code, the historic code, the existing building code, and the Calgary Building Standards Code. So every three years, they get adopted. This year is no exception. The state essentially approved the codes in January of this year. The codes get published on July 1st of the year, so that was, that happened a few months ago. And then we start to write our local amendments to stay on board and be ready for the ultimate adoption of these new codes, which will be January 1st, 2023. These get adopted regardless of whether or not we modify them or amend them, but, so we all have to go by them in the state. It happens automatically, but we like to write our codes at the same time. And why is that? Well, and specifically for the building codes, we do various clarifications. We clarify the enforcement agency, we clarify the administrative provisions, and the other big thing we do that we work very closely with the fire department on is to align the building code provisions with the amendments to the fire code, so we make sure that we use the same language and we're clear for all of our constituents. And with that, I'll let Dina speak to the fire code amendments.
All right, this next slide breaks down the fire code amendments that we're just doing introduction tonight into five main categories. The one, as Eric stated, basically is administrative. There's sections in the, these are model codes for the entire state, and they give you parameters when you adopt it that you mentioned, who your jurisdiction is, that we identify, that who the fire code official is, you know, this is Lompoc type thing. This ties the clarity to our applicants for reference and needing permits, and also we use some planning terms. In that first category, we reference that, yes, you may need a fire permit or building permit, but you might also need a general or conditional use permit, so that those are crosswalked, so it's more clear, because sometimes the different divisions speak a little bit different language. We have some clarifications in fire sprinklers. As you know, the state of California requires fire sprinklers and all new residential construction. But we also clarify for certain, certain localities. But we also clarify for certain, certain localities. As you all know, we have a pretty robust cannabis extraction volatile, so that is actually codified in here. They added a full chapter on cannabis and expanded upon that. And to maintain our prior amendments, this is not new. We have a couple little new languages that are outlined in our strike through, but we routinely, every three years, do modifications. We also maintain our prior amendments for, such as fireworks and explosives, that safe and sane is legal during a certain time, that you can only have the X amount of explosives. It doesn't, if you're maybe a gun blacksmith person in a, your, a normal home, it doesn't touch that. This is, if you're transporting them, you need a permit in, in our city. Access, we make it specific, so what our capabilities are, and simple things like a Knox box, which is those keypad locks, are to make sure gates open when emergency services respond, and consistent with our prior amendments. And simple things like a fire hydrant, so that I cross-check with the water department, so it's in our standards that this is what our, our fire hydrant looks like. Different locations, you know, they freeze, they have different, different connections, they have different needs. We're really lucky, we have a great water system here, so very proud of that. It helps a lot with our insurance. And finally, miscellaneous, where we have some hazardous materials limits. Otherwise, sometimes the sky could be the limit, and we may not have the resources or we're isolated to get those resources here. And then one particular thing about the fire code, it's not used not only to ensure as we get things built and a certificate of occupancy, we turn it over to the, the new management or the new owners, that it is a maintenance code, too. So where Eric has the pleasure of having all, a lot of codes to begin with, we have the pleasure of having the, the codes that help maintain that building going forward until, for instance, the building's back on the ground and we build something new, which we've only taken down one building in the many years that I've been here, one time, and that was pretty dilapidated, and it was a dangerous building. So if you recall, it was in our downtown. Okay, so what are the next steps? So first, after this introduction, we'll do some advertisements, and we'll publish locally for the city council meeting for the adoption of the amended codes for when the next meeting does occur. That public hearing is scheduled to be conducted on November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and at that time, too, we can discuss and adopt proposed amendments. The adopted ordinance will be transmitted to the state for filing with the appropriate agencies. This is something we're actually required to do when we pass these things. We report it to a couple bodies at the state, they record it, we make a list, there's actually even a website, you can go check and see if our name's there. And then the adopted ordinance will be incorporated in the Long Poak Municipal Code, and we make that available to the public. And this year, we're excited, because we worked very closely together to make sure that we cleaned up some language and the organization of the codes itself. Any of you who've gone on our website, it's pretty user-friendly as far as the municipal code, except for you kind of need to know what chapter you're going to, to look for, let alone if things are all spread out in different chapters. So this, there's a lot of changes to move everything all into one chapter under the municipal code. We look at that as being more, more business-friendly, easier to find what you're looking for. We can help our customers go to things a lot more ready, readily, so hopefully that will be an improvement. I know it's been needed, and it takes a lot of coordination, because one of the things they like to do every three years is, I call it shuffle the deck sometimes. Something used to be in one chapter in the code, now it's five chapters later, they invent another chapter. And so these amendments, whereas we keep things going on a regular basis, it's just moved, so we have to do some language, and it's a lot of clerical amendments. And that is, concludes our formal presentation, introduction into the code adoption, which, you know, as I said, every three years, and then we're also available for any questions or any clarity that the council may wish to ask. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, a couple of things. I guess the reason this wouldn't be on consent or just readily adopted is because of the additional requirements, as it says here, the imposition of requirements other than those in the standard California Building Code. So that's really what we're here to make a decision on, is what you want to add, i.e. items that you showed us on page ten, is that...
Yeah, that's correct. We are obligated to, if we make any changes, they have to be site-specific or more restrictive. We can't lessen the code. We can't go, I know the whole state wants residential fire sprinklers, but we don't really want to do that here, so we can't do that. We can't make it less, but we can make it specific or more stringent.
Right, well, I mean, the state requires that you have a certain amount of dampness in your wood with new construction for fire, so why would you need sprinklers if you're building with wet wood, right? So, I mean, Mr. Hoggan has a huge amount, several feet of volumes to back him, so this is all based upon fire requirements, it looks like. We're not changing, we're not doing anything different in the California Building Code here that you've shown us. It's all fire that we're adopting new.
Mostly, not entirely. There is some minor cleanup of terminology that we wanted to fix, and especially with the work that's exempt for permits, but most of the rest of it was because, A, either the state's codes aren't clear on certain matters that we run across time and time again, and we want to clarify those things in the code, or yes, additions to the code or amendments that you're speaking of.
Why did, why are we changing a lot in the fire code? I'm, I'm kind of seeing, I'm thinking of little, you say we're an isolated area and hard to get to, I'm thinking Gary, Siskiyouq, Guadalupe, Cayucas, do they do the same thing?
It's typical throughout the entire state that even large jurisdictions do amendments of codes. LA County has their own code adoption.
What's Santa Barbara County do?
They, they do code amendments as well. So specifically for, for ours, we look at a lot of site access. If bridges fail or we have wildfires threatening our locality, can we get those other resources here? Or if there's an earthquake and we have other issues or floods. So it's, it's not just fire, we're trying to make it more resilient here as a whole.
Yeah, I just, I mean, it's so onerous, the building code now and difficult in California. I just almost feel as though we're adding to make it even more difficult. And then we call out cannabis in here because of the manufacturing aspect, that now we're going to go ahead and require you to have, I guess, with sprinklers. I mean, this is a, a very hard report for me to read, because A, I don't speak building, and B, it just bounces back and forth, back and forth on here. And, you know, I didn't get a real easy-to-read redline copy here either, so this is why, I'm just wondering, is it really necessary, or is it something we want to do? You know, I understand safety, but then again, I understand complication.
True, and, and there's no endless complication to the code, that's for sure, and, and they're hard to decipher sometimes. Let me give you an example, a couple examples. California Building Code has in the back of it several appendix, appendices. Those are all available for adoption, but the code specifically says, if you want to adopt that appendix, you have to do it specifically through ordinance. So another example of that, I was with the county of Santa Barbara for fifteen years, and we wrote, so we wrote, rewrote the code a few times, although we had a break in there because they were changing to the international codes, but aside from that, we had to, to take an ordinance for the high fire standards that are at the county, in effect at the county, because they had their own map for years. But when the state wrote into them all the wildland urban interface provisions, they basically laid it out there, but you had to amend it to make it work for your locale. Have we not amended it? Hope Ranch that got burned through in the back of the Painted Cave Fire would have not been protected with these standards and fire sprinklers if we had not done that adoption for the wildland urban interface. So it was a big gap that was missing, and we, we addressed that by altering the code, adopting it with provisions that changed it to cover that area. So it, it's, it's not necessarily always adding layers. It's sometimes clarifying layers, sometimes adding them where we think they need to be specific, more specific for our town. And so it's, I agree, this can be onerous, but these are well thought out, and we, we don't like to add layers to it. I personally hate it. I, it's like, let's give them the basic code unless we need to amend it. So hopefully that's helpful for you.
One of the things we do, too, is we reach out, like, for instance, Pismo, other jurisdictions that are local to us, and see what they're doing, and make sure we're, we're not, besides what our, our local area may possibly need, we're not a normal, abnormal, sorry, in this location. So if they want bigger addresses by two inches so that they could see it, because we recognize there's an issue, we can't see this stuff at night, that's, we're asking for very, the similar things. We try to, and it also helps the contractor, so they know if they're doing work in one city and they move to the next town over. The last major update we did, it's been a few years, we did it basically congruent with Santa Maria City, too, because they were kind of our, our next kind of sister city. So fire went down pretty much lockstep, that's why they have similar Knox boxes, similar caps, to kind of help with people that could be putting other nefarious objects in where we need to pump water, so that's not blocked when we need it in the case of emergency. So I don't disagree with you at all. In fact, I mean, even people that do this for a profession and living, code adoption's some of the reason people retire. They're like, I can't do this another year. This is really, you know, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of work, and it's, it's very detail-oriented. Yeah, I can completely sympathize. It's, it's painful for you to read, and it's painful for us to write, but unfortunately, we're trying to spell it out as easily as we can and to help align it so our community can use it as, as easy as possible. You did also mention cannabis. They added a whole chapter in cannabis to cover that, and this isn't new. This was in the local municipal ordinance that we passed for cannabis, that when they did volatile extractions, they would need fire sprinklers. We're just making the code itself read that cleanly, so that if they read it one place and they read it another place, it's saying the same language, for instance.
I'll just add that she talked about reshuffling, and it makes it difficult for all of us to find things. The worst thing is when they remove something. Can you imagine being out in the field and say, I don't think that's there anymore, and you're going, yeah, I'm sure it's there, I'm sure it's there, and you come back and read the code and it's gone. It's, it can be hard to apply sometimes.
Councilmember Ball.
Just real quick, no controversy here. I just had a kind of a bigger picture question for maybe the two of you. I mean, there's two sides to this. There's always going to be a developer or a builder who's upset and wishes there was less code, but on the flip side, there's people, there's folks that rent or folks that lease a building that maybe has two floors, and they depend upon hoping and assuming that you guys have done your job and the code is maintained and they're safe and they're building. We could argue all day about the specifics of certain codes, but in general, are the codes that are set up for fire safety, for building safety, and where we are now, are we being proactive or reactive? I, I think we're being proactive, because we're trying to ensure safety and get ahead of the curve instead of just saying, whoops, we probably should have done that. Maybe you can enlighten us a little bit to that.
Definitely proactive. For some people that have been in town for a while, we have, have had wildfires threaten our location, multiple areas. We haven't always been in a total drought. We have had riverbank to riverbank floodwaters come through. So what we always try to do is forecast, what is the absolute worst-case scenario? You know, the, the what-if plan. And so we're proactive on that, but this also is not retroactive. So if somebody's already built, they're already occupied, they're certificate of occupancy, unless they completely change the use into something more hazardous, then they have to revisit and kind of bring things up to code. It's, it's moving forward. So we're trying, as we build more buildings, to get safer and safer and safer with the ultimate goal. And just like every three years, they update the codes, there's people that are far smarter than we are in, throughout the United States and internationally, that come up with these, these items. Unfortunately, a lot of things that make these volumes of codes, at least on the life safety side that we both cover, is because there's been somebody harmed, because there wasn't something in place. But we definitely try and be proactive. We did, and you'll see in ordinance two, we have several findings, and we have to base these things on, on three things: climate, geographic, and topographic. So we always bring it back to, what are the challenges? And that's why it's a local adoption, because if you're familiar with, like, the city of San Luis Obispo, their roads don't all connect, they have, you know, kind of some, I call them hills, but maybe they call them mountains in, in the middle of things. So it kind of makes their urban sprawl and interface really unique. So they basically just rewrote their whole map and said, nope, it's all counted now because we can't evacuate. So it's, it's definitely specific to each community. So you have people like us that have to go down and drill down into these codes and, and realign it for what makes sense for here. We try to be very fair as well.
I appreciate that.
I'll just, I'll just add to that, I'll give it a little mixture, because they're proactive in the sense that we have code officials throughout the nation that are writing these codes, trying to improve them. We're voting members. We just, I haven't been to any conventions lately, but they have nationwide conventions on these, and voters like you and me, that are educated professionals on the thing, and we can make our votes. Where they are reactionary is with new technology. The energy code right now, that is the hugest amount of change going on in the codes right now. New equipment, new technology, all this new stuff coming out, and it's hard for code officials to stay ahead of that stuff and write provisions fast enough to new products that there's very little information on. So, so in that, in that sense, it's, it's hard to keep up. But nevertheless, that's why the books keep growing, they don't get any smaller, so...
Appreciate that. I just wanted to say to you both, I, I'm sensitive to you both, because in your position, you're often the scapegoat for something that isn't, something that you wrote yourself, but sometimes the state has put something that is complicated in place. But thank you both for your work, and to those that are willing to listen, there was probably a time in our local Long Poak history where there was an argument, perhaps at city council, that rebar is not necessary in a building. And here we are, you know, eighty, seventy, sixty years later, and we're, we're seeing like, oh my gosh, that building needs to be retrofitted to be perfectly sound and healthy. So again, just sometimes we, as council, we feel like, ah, maybe we're getting ahead of the curve a little bit, but at the end of the day, you folks are tasked with trying to keep us safe, and I appreciate that work.
I can give one more example, too. So when, like, solar started first going on single-family homes, if we have a fire or it's in the attic, we have to cut a hole in the roof, and now it's peppered literally with a whole bunch of solar panels. So about three code cycles ago, we had to write, we need a pathway, we need somewhere where our firefighters can get on the other side of the roof, so if something's collapsing on this side. And so a lot of amendments were solar, solar, solar. And now they've beefed up, if you will, and they've created a whole nother chapter. We went from solar to photovoltaic, and, you know, we even changed the languages. And now we don't have to amend that as much at all, because they put that in the code. It eventually became, as we would say, codified. So it's just, it's a, it's a moving body of art, if you will. I know, it's painful.
Look at technology.
And I think, I think you have to take a positive view of it, given how onerous it is to, to update it. So again, you guys did the hard work, and then it's left to us to try and explain, not the reasons, but the, the need and the, the way it helps us value each other and help each other make a safe community. So I, I, I get that it, it's a lot of work. Reading through this is not an easy job. And again, you guys did the hard work, and now, you know, it's on us to explain, there's a lot of unfunded mandates, there's a lot of localism in order to make sure that we have a safe community, and that, that ends up being the partnership that we, as an incorporated environment, agree to, to try and protect each other. So I thank you for that. Any other questions from council before we go to public comment? All right, you guys can step back for a while while we open the floor for public comment on item number five. If you'd like to speak to this item, you may come to the podium for three minutes. If you would like to call in, the number to call is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. Madam clerk, did we have any written comments for this item?
No, ma'am, nothing.
All right. All right, the floor is now open. We'll give it a bit to see if anybody calls in at eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one, or anybody would like to come to the podium. And in an effort to make sure that the microphone doesn't go off and, you know, we make use of that time, I'll go ahead and announce that the Community Development Block Grant and Local Human Service Funds and Needs Assessment is open. You will need to attend a mandatory pre-application workshop, which is Wednesday, November ninth, twenty-twenty-two, at ten thirty a.m., and it's a Zoom meeting online. All that information is on the city website, but you are welcome to contact Ms. Chanel Ovay at eight zero five eight seven five eight two four five to ask questions, find out about the deadline for the application of Thursday, December eighth, at three p.m. And remember, we have positions on that Human Services Commission open that we'd love to see an application, especially for District Three, which is Councilmember Starbucks. All right, seeing no one call in and no one rise to give public comment on item number five, we'll bring it back to council. Any other questions, or is there a motion? Councilmember Cordova.
I'll motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And Mr. Ball seconds. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. All right, item number six, final agenda item of the evening, consideration of adjustment to compensation for members of the city council and mayor, introduction of ordinance number seventeen oh one parentheses twenty-two, and that will be Mr. Albro, our city manager, to give the presentation.
Thank you. So we've looked at our comps for firefighters, police...
So we've looked at our comps for firefighters, police officers, all our workers, RBW and management and Unwrapped. And I thought it was only right that we look at your guys' pay as well. I know a lot of you up there aren't doing this for the money and I know you do it for the honor of serving our community and we're very fortunate to have you. But I think as we look forward to what the future looks like, we probably should have this discussion. And I'll, I'll open up, but what, what options do we have? One thing we can do by state code is we can raise it five percent based upon the last time we increased it. The last time we increased it was the year two thousand. So this would, as soon as you could possibly put this in effect, it'd be January twenty twenty-three, so that'd be twenty-three years. That equates to thirty dollars for the council members and forty dollars for the mayor. There is a chart in, in the staff report that shows the maximum that you could adjust it. That would be twelve ninety for a council member and seventeen twenty for the mayor. There's also a chart in there that shows the local area, some of the cities that what theirs is. Santa Maria did change hers, so there, there should be an update to the staff report. Their mayor's now nineteen fifty-six and their council members are seventeen oh six. Yeah, if you wanted to look at the fiscal impact, maybe about ninety thousand increase after your allocations, it'd be right around thirty thousand annually. So that's if you did the max. And I just want to turn it over to you guys. I'm here if you have any questions.
All right, Councilmember Ball.
So it's always awkward for anyone as a leader, politician, to talk about pay raises. So I am not up for election this year, so I'm going to take a stab at it and I'm going to be as transparent with you all, which I hope you all appreciate because it's the truth. So my wife and I own a business together. We make high-ish, middle-high, five figures together here at the city of Lompoc. My pay per month is six hundred dollars a month. Because I, like many other people in cities, can take advantage of the healthcare here, I write a check to the city of Lompoc for seven hundred and ninety-three dollars every single month. So very quickly, let's do the math. I write a check to the city of Lompoc for more than I take home. So if anyone out there ever says politicians in Lompoc just want to get rich and they're just lining their pockets, then please remember what I said. And if you don't believe me, it's right here in the paperwork. You can ask anyone. We're very transparent. So it does make me question, well, why haven't we figured out a way to get more people involved in the system here in Lompoc? In the political system, in the leadership system? Why aren't we getting young folks or parents to want to step up and lead and take one for the Lompoc team and sit in these seats? Well, when I tell somebody this story about, well, this is, you know, I give more money to the city than I bring home and they immediately say, whoa, gosh, why do you do that? And so it does make me think, it does put a limitation on people that may have some really good will, some really good ideas for our community to say, you know what, it's not even worth it to be up here because I'm not compensated for that. On top of that, you have to have a really thick skin and you have to, there's people that disagree with you and get angry. But I'm still willing to write a check to the city of Lompoc because I care about this place. So the last time anyone on city council was given a pay raise, I was twenty-one years old. Today is my forty-third birthday. In almost every single different category, whether it's the private industry or it's the public sector, the cost of living happens, inflation happens. And so the six hundred dollars that was worth six hundred dollars in two thousand, I had a question. What is that six hundred dollars worth now with inflation after all this time? So I was hopeful, maybe someone could help me with that, that number. So let's start with that. What is the six hundred dollars that I'm getting per month? What is that now worth in comparison to two thousand?
Short answer?
Yes, ma'am.
About one thousand eighty-three dollars. That is within the national average. Couldn't find specific to California. I would imagine it'd be a little bit higher. So one thousand eighty-three. That is your question?
I think so. So is my six hundred dollars is now worth more or less than it was in two thousand?
You've got less buying power.
So I, so I just want to put it out there. The six hundred dollars that made a lot of sense in the year two thousand. Remember what you paid for milk or gas or anything else? That same number is what we get here today in twenty twenty-two. So my best argument for, look, I, I'd love to benefit from this because it'd be nice to at least break even with the city. That'd be, that'd be great by my book. But I think the bigger picture is what are we, how are we incentivizing? How are we really motivating young people, parents, anyone else to take a leadership role? And if we, as the city of Lompoc, are grossly under everyone else, especially as a, as a full-service city with all of these utilities and we're in charge of making decisions on tens of millions of dollars in a budget every single year, and I'm still willing to write that check back to the city of Lompoc? That's my case. That's my argument. I think twenty-two years, at, at least in some way, it's been long enough. The one before that was nineteen eighty-five, so fifteen years, they made an increase. Not saying we need to double it like they did, but there should be an openness to, to a discussion of fairness here. Not just for me, but for the future, too. That's my seventeen cents for what it's worth. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
I've been on the dais for eight years and I've always been taught that public service is an honor, but it's also, you need to value your time to a point so that other people can feel incentivized to also participate. We're running into a time now where we've had hardships. We've had, there's people out there that would love to participate. But regardless of insurance or whatever, I'm also in the same position where we could, you also write a check because there's not enough there. And I think that we should look at our, this position as something is of value. Some people look at it as being part of the city council, as someone that you can complain to, someplace, someone that you hope can get something fixed because we're supposed to be your representatives, which we are. But I also concur with Councilmember Ball. I think it's time that we look at it as a position of value, which it is, instead of saying, well, you're supposed to do it for free. It's not just about the free. I didn't, I didn't, I never signed up for council because of the pay, obviously. Okay, you do it to help your community. But there's a cost to all this. I've been doing this eight years now. And to do something for that long, it's a commitment, especially when your attendance is for council meetings is a hundred percent. Not, it's not a bragging thing. It's about being committed to something. How many people can do that? And I think we need to do this as an incentive to attract other people to participate. As you can see, Councilmember Starbuck and myself were running unopposed. When I first start, ran for council, there were eight people that ran for the position we ran. I believe it was eight people and, you know, six people. That, that's called a race. That's competition. That gives you choices. It gives you, it gives you a lot more choices than having somebody run unopposed. It's not that it's a bad thing to run unopposed, but it's kind of strange. You know what I mean? That people won't participate because they're either having hardships, it's not worth their time. Or maybe there's a benefit that's, that's able to be had through the city, but then you still can't afford to get that benefit because your pay is so low. So I think that we could incentivize everything by at least bringing it up to a standard where you're at least breaking even because there are business owners out there regardless of the benefit. And I'm told also that there are, yeah, part-time people here that are working at the city. You know, similar to city council, you know, maybe they're working a little bit more for their health insurance and they're still not making ends meet. So people don't look at that part. So I think if you look at it as a position of, of, of people just trying to provide insurance, and this is not about us, I'm talking about other people. And they're not able to provide insurance or they have to cut their wife off because, you know, of, of other reasons, okay? Because maybe it's a part-time position and they know, but they're doing the best they can. So if we would look at it as a position of value, which we should, then I, I'm an advocate for making sure you value us and also it'll be an incentive again for you to participate. I think it's really important for people to feel that it's worth their time to participate. So I hope that we have another hard discussion on this so that we can move forward because it's been a long time. I think what, according to Dean, was the last time we got a raise was two thousand?
Yeah, January two thousand.
Been a long time, guys. You know what I mean? And the city's gone through a lot of ups and downs and right now, the city's on an uptick. Thank you.
Any more council comments, concerns you want to share? Councilmember Starbuck.
I, I'm just going to make a, a comment on this because one of the factors that I don't think has been brought out here. You've listed a table here, Dean, which is if the, the adjustment had been made and it starts at the six hundred, it goes to the twelve ninety and this is the five percent. The council has the option to set whatever they would like, as long as it does not exceed the maximum of twelve ninety. Here's the interesting thing. Whatever the amount is that's decided, when you read here on the background, it says, it resets year from the date of the last adjustment, which if, say you made six hundred and fifty dollars, council pay now, bam, it resets and starts again and this chart becomes negligent. You start the five percent again. So it, it's a way that it controls how much you can do. So just remember that when you want to do a pay adjustment on yourself, that it does actually set the pace for what future councils will be able to adjust for themselves. So there's a good and a bad here with this.
Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, real quick, and I certainly appreciate that. And again, the city put together the numbers and again, there's, I hope we can have a healthy discussion. It doesn't necessarily have to be shooting for the top number there and you make a good point about that. But again, in twenty, thirty years, other cities around us are going to, you know, have their number and it's probably not going to be stagnant to where we are right now. So I just hope that in some way, Lompoc makes a habit of not paying the most, but trying to keep up with our neighbors so that we can do as good a job as they do.
Councilmember Cordova.
Can I just go back to what Councilmember Starbuck just said? Are you referring to if, for some reason, this council decided to make an adjustment for the maximum? You're saying the five percent then goes off of that every year thereafter? Are, is that what you're saying to adhere?
It would start, I don't want to speak for Mr. Starbuck, but it would start with whatever figure.
It is.
It is. It, it, you know, it just, it would zero out if it.
So for example, for example, if you raised it to six oh one, you'd lost all those twenty-three years and the next year you could only go to six thirty-one for the council members. So it resets that, how far back you can go back and adjust it. You can only adjust it based upon the last time you adjusted it. And for us, it's twenty-three years.
Right. So if, if it, if it was to be reset now, the, the council sitting the following year can elect to do it again, for example, but they would only be able to go back to the prior year?
Yes.
Yeah, correct. That makes sense. Completely understand. The five percent, however, then is no longer based on six hundred dollars. It's now based on the maximum, which is the one thousand two hundred and ninety for council, for example. Is the five percent the minimum or the maximum or is that percentage able to be adjusted?
It is able to be, the maximum is five, though.
So it's a maximum of five percent. Okay. And, and who decides the five percent or whether it's five percent or three percent or two percent? Is it the council at that time or is that something that this council sets in place and says, hey, we can move that five percent down to three percent and make the three percent a maximum?
It would have to come back and the council would have to make that election.
Understood. Is that what you were getting at?
No, I was just making the point that it would reset again. And, you know, five percent's allowed, maximum allowed by law. If you wanted to do three percent or whatever, it, it would be overturned later by a future council if they wanted, but they could never exceed the five percent if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Is there a consideration for push, pulling it back from five percent to three percent, even if it can be overturned at a later time?
I, I just wanted to make council aware that this one little blurb in here is basically you're hitting the reset button.
Yeah.
Whatever the council decides tonight to do for pay, it will reset in twenty twenty-three. The maximum after that will be five percent by law. If we say three percent and then two years from now, the new council that's sitting here says, yeah, five percent, that's what I want, not three percent. Those guys were idiots.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think another way to say it that could be helpful is if the council tonight raised it to six oh one, you would have to wait twenty-three years before you could again raise it to twelve ninety. That's another way to say it.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ball.
And I just want to follow up. You do make a good point. I do appreciate that. But that same, that's, that same point applies to nineteen eighty-five, same applies to two thousand. So that did reset for them. And again, council for twenty-two, twenty-three years has never found the will to do what I consider to be the right thing in this context. But look, there is going to be a reset. But how far behind are we from our neighbors?
I am up for reelection. I do have a competition, so all of you think I'm crazy for having this discussion. But I will point out, this is about the only time someone might pay attention to all the things your council does for you. And at some point, all five of us are going to need or want to step away from this job. And part of our responsibility is to cultivate and encourage the next generation of leaders. And we're very lucky to have two individuals in their forties on council. That's a rarity in a lot of communities. And the communities that do have representation that more reflects their age group, their socioeconomic, do so with a compensation that is respectful of the time it takes to do the job right. So council members have spoken of prepping for a council meeting. The council meetings average anywhere from four to six hours twice a month. It takes anywhere from ten to twenty hours to prep for a meeting, given whatever the topics are on the agenda, the time to go sit with staff and ask the right questions and prepare them so they can answer our questions when we become before council. There's the time we take to respond to phone calls, meet with constituents. And then there's the additional committees that we're required to sit on that require either an hour of our time or two hours of our time, but have more items than even our agenda does that take a forty-hour preparation time. So I think that it's really important that our community understands that it's an honor to serve. We all believe that. What we're concerned about is that the next generation isn't solely looking for the honor. They have families, they have careers, and stepping away is something we've all chosen to do, but the next generations aren't necessarily coming from it. And so while this is a difficult conversation for someone who is up for reelection, I'm looking at the need to go back to and have, and to Councilmember Vega's point, in twenty fourteen, when he ran, it wasn't just eight people. There were nearly eleven people running for two positions. And, and people were interested in serving and interested in doing this work and we have lost that interest. And time and time again, I have been approached by individuals interested in being on council, have great ideas, have fabulous questions, are full of energy. We get to the end of the conversation and they offhandedly say, you know, what does it pay? And I say, the stipend is six hundred dollars a month for a council member and eight hundred dollars for mayor. And they take a deep breath and they're like, maybe when I'm old and retired. Maybe when I come into some money. But I can't do it because I've got to save for college. I'm paying off my own college debt. I started a business and I need to invest the time there. And that lack of at least equitable respect for the time involved makes it difficult for me to make that sacrifice to my family despite the desire to run. And, and we've eliminated the cost of running. It used to be it's too expensive because all our positions used to be at large. The only position that's currently at large is now the mayor and it's every two years. So we've in effect made it more expensive to run a mayoral campaign, but we've made it much, much less expensive to actually run a campaign to get on council. But the sacrifice of four years of being on council. But the sacrifice of four years of being on council, the time away from family, the time away from hobbies, the time away from your career, has led to a lot of it being, and no offense to anybody on the dais or in the audience, it's ended up being retirees, individuals who are wealthy, individuals that are trust fund babies, individuals that have all the time in the world and have gotten to a point in their life where they want to give back. But if you look at our demographics of our community, that is not what our community is dominated by. So with a district like Councilmember Vega's, we really need to make sure that the lowest income, highest density neighborhood has representation when Councilmember Vega decides not to run again. And what does that look like for that individual who's working potentially two or three jobs and supporting a family to make a choice to come and serve on council, so that his neighborhood, her neighborhood can be heard? And that's our goal. It's not about making a lot of money, it's about making sure the next generation is respected and incentivized to serve and get the honor that we all have. So I know that I may seem like it's crazy for me to have this discussion, but I've seen it for the past six years that I've been here, and we've lost some really amazing potential candidates because of the stipend we receive. There are other ways to incentivize, but we can't even step forward on those with term limits or changing the mayor to four years until we start having more people wanting to run, rather than the few that you see up here either being unopposed or one other candidate. So I'm willing to take the risk to have that conversation tonight, and I appreciate you all for taking that risk and having the conversation, so I want to keep it moving forward. Before we go to public comment, any more discussion about our questions for staff? Okay, let's go to public comment. We will open the floor for item number six. If you would like to come to the podium, you have three minutes. If you would like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. Were there any written comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Okay.
Councilmembers and audience, I'm Mary Ann Webster. I would recommend that you go for the maximum, not just for yourself, but for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I see a blinking light from a call-in. All right.
Good evening, you're live in the council chamber. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Most of what I wanted to say tonight has already been said, but I've been watching for two hours, so I'm gonna say it anyway. My name is Ashley Costa, and I'm a resident of the city of Lompoc. As you know, I'm also a past member of the Lompoc City Council. I wanted to call in today about Agenda Item Six to express my support for the maximum increase as outlined by the staff report. I appreciated the comparison to other communities to show this increase will create more equity in comparison to the city's local counterparts. When I was seated in office, I was at the start of my career. I wasn't married, and I didn't have children. I also worked two other jobs outside of my role as city council member that provided financially what my role on council did not. The key to that story is that it's a rare set of circumstances that allowed me to serve. Unfortunately, based on those I speak to around the community, many others don't have the same time to give away, time away from their family, their career, or other obligations. And I'm not saying that the compensation should incent those who don't have the time, and quite frankly, I don't believe the level of compensation we're talking about is an incentive to running for office. However, I am saying that low compensation, that's too low, can be a deterrent for those who may otherwise consider and should be running for office, meaning right now, the cost and benefit analysis is out of balance. And after 22 years without an increase, you have the opportunity this evening to bring just a bit more balance to the sacrifice and reward that is being an elected official. So between fundraisers, sponsorships, ballot tickets, services on other boards and committees, things like, you know, dry cleaning my suits before council meetings, staff money for the dozens of weekly meetings, and 20 hours per week of work at best, at times, I would say that it costs me money as well to be on city council. And I don't believe that's right, and I don't believe it's fair, and I don't believe it will give Lompoc the best chance to attract all demographic experiences and ages to service. I believe a vote to increase council and mayoral pay goes far beyond the current seated council and is an investment in the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David, and I am a member of the community, and I will go back to biblical principles and say that a workman's worth is higher. And those that are committed to serve in the community should have the compensation that is necessary for them to maintain some semblance of benefit to their own expenses, and they should be given that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Excuse me, would you mind?
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind turning down your TV in the background, or whatever's playing. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi. You're live in the council chamber, you have three minutes to give your public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Kathy Howard, I'm a resident of Lompoc, and I believe you have to give yourself the highest raise you can. I will have to say that I'm from District Four. My councilman makes a multitude of sacrifices. He's not a retiree, he's not a rich inheritance person, and he has a young family, and recently a very young family, that he has, he sacrifices his time for. I think that that's worth much more than you're gonna give yourself if you go for the maximum. So go for it anyway. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other calls, and no one rising to the podium, and no written comments, we will bring it back to council, and Madam Cordova, you have the floor.
So I think that history has shown that for 22 years, this council has maintained the mindset that we are here to serve this community, and that I think is honorable. We've seen many council and mayor positions serve repeated terms, and it was all for the same amount of money that we just discussed and saw on the report. So I think we've established as a community and a local government body that we're not here to make money, and we're not here to get rich. I think we're all here because we care about Lompoc. Recently, there was, if you're paying attention, you know, we've had the difficult tasks of also having to increase wages for departments and divisions throughout City Hall. That's something that we have to do. Anyone who does not understand that type of hard decision, or those types of hard decisions that need to be made by this council, and those are inevitable decisions, is irresponsible and realistically viewing the needs of this community. I can tell you firsthand, I'm not a trust fund baby. I work probably more than 40 hours a week in my profession. I've sacrificed a lot to sit here, and I do it, and I did it initially because I grew up in this community, and I did not want to see Lompoc continue to deteriorate. And the change that I've seen in the last couple of years on this council has inspired me to continue to give my all to this position. I spend way more than four hours, in, as Mayor Osborne noted, all the hours and the time that is spent. And I can honestly tell you that when I hear people say that we have to make our community equitable, that is correct. I've said it a million times, that if we don't invest in ourselves, then how are we ever going to really make a change for Lompoc? So as hard as it is, I would do it for free, I would do it for nothing, and I tell you that from the bottom of my heart. I would still sit here if we were deciding to take away the stipend. But I can honestly tell you that this has been something that I've pondered on, and I am in support of it, so I just wanted to give my thoughts on that.
Thank you. So currently, you see most of the council you will have come January 2023. I'm up for reelection. I am confident I will be sitting in this chair, but in case I'm not, I want to say that it is an honor to serve. I have been committed to this, and yes, there is a loss, but it's been very much worth that. I know that Councilmember Cordova and Ball are here for two more years, so they have accepted where we are with our current stipend. I know that Councilmember Starbuck and Vega are accepting of it because they put their hat in the ring to be reelected. So we all know what we're dealing with. So I'd like to make a motion tonight that we increase the salaries for the stipends, they're not really salaries, they're stipend, for council to 1,200 and 1,400, so that it stays that $200 difference, and give some wiggle room to the next group, so we're not doing a hard reset at the max, and that we be mindful of not making it effective January 2023, but making it effective after the following election and effective in January of 2025. So that would be my emotion, a motion is to make the adjustment, but make sure that it doesn't go in effect for two years. And I would look for a second on that. Councilmember Vega?
You know, along with the communication, this is our time here to say that, that I think that all of you are, we're all on the same page, I think everyone agrees, that it's a lot of time, it's a lot of work, you guys have all put in an extra effort, and I applaud all of us for doing that. I think we're doing a really good job just for trying to get along and make things happen for this community. So I'd like to make the motion, but without the waiting for two years after that. I think, you know, listening to Councilmember Ball and our experiences and whatever, we're not saving anybody any money, what we're doing, we're incentivizing. I think people are gonna see the improvements, and they're gonna agree with us that this position is valuable. So by waiting, because we think it's better to wait, so people won't think we're trying to just give ourselves a raise, I'd rather go with the message, go with strength, and say, let's just make it happen. And that's kind of my motion, to amend your motion, if I could.
So you've actually made a substitute motion, which I'm okay with.
If I can, yes, ma'am.
Yes, you absolutely can, I didn't get a second, so you can make your substitute motion. Are you recommending that it stay at the 1,200 and the 1,400?
Yes, I'll go along with you, I support that, and I hopefully we can get a second on that and move forward. Instead of being embarrassed, I think we should move forward with strength. I appreciate you being forthright, Councilmember Ball, and all of us here that have been making a point, but it's time, it's time. And again, with the negative comment that, the negative part of it, that Councilmember Starbuck said that there's a negative too, well, let's make it not a negative, okay? So if we're gonna make sure that we do something, let's make sure we do it so that the next council also benefits in the same manner, okay? Instead of doing a, instead of being embarrassed and going too low, and then all of a sudden they get 5% from being too low, and then we're still back in wherever, you know? Instead of being 20, 22 years behind, we'll be 10 years behind, so let's not be behind. That's...
Your substitute motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Councilmember Ball, is that a second that I see you're...
So, yes, with a couple of comments, if I may. So definitely a second on that, and I appreciate your thoughts on moving it out a couple of years, I would just submit that 1985, they made a decision, in 2000, they made a decision, in 2015, we made no decisions. We're in 2022, and to push it to 2025, we're talking about 25 years of not making an adjustment. So the sooner the better. There, all of us have rolled up our sleeves and decided to work harder than ever to try to write a lot of the issues that Lompoc faces, and that does take time, it does take recommitment and dedication. So to do so sooner, I think just reinvigorates everyone up here to recommit to doing an even better job than we're already trying to do, and that's my two cents. So I would definitely second that.
Is there, before, I want to make sure there's clarity, is, do you need any clarification on that motion?
Yes, she does.
So I want to make sure what you mean by 1,200 is $1,200 per month for council members, $1,400 per month for the mayor. And the motion by Councilmember Vega would be that this begins after this election in November 2022 to begin January 2023, correct? Is that correct?
Correct. This next, this next poll, yes. Is that correct? And also, if I can?
Yeah.
Yes.
Your motion.
So, and we're not even going for the maximum here, so I said, so if anybody complains or says anything, I mean, we could have gone for a little bit more, but I appreciate you going with even numbers. I think that's a good thing, right?
And any other adjustments? Councilmember Ball, for your second?
No, I think it's pretty simple. 1,200 council, 1,400 for the mayor, start January 2023. It'd be nice to catch up with some of our neighboring communities.
Okay.
It's plus extras, right?
I don't even go there.
Just kidding, sorry.
I just don't even go there. Any, that clarify for everyone? All right, so we have a substitute motion on the floor, and we've gotten clarity. Any other questions before we take a vote? All right, seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for one, and the only reason I voted against it is I really think we could have gotten another two years out of not having to pay that, but I respect my peers for that. So thank you for a difficult conversation during a difficult season, but I think it's important that we be very transparent and not work to protect our seats, but have important conversations that bring our community forward and set us up for success in the future. Did we have any written communications for any other matters that we have not discussed?
No, ma'am, nothing.
None. All right, this is your chance for final oral communications for the evening. If you would like to speak on city issues, you're more than welcome to come to the podium for your two minutes. You may also call in at 805-875-8201. All right, I think I already announced the notice for funding for the Community Development Block grants from the Local Human Service Fund. So again, visit the website, this is a time killer, while we make sure to give anybody who wants to call in the opportunity to call in. And seeing no one call in, we will close our final oral communications and bring it back to council, and we'll begin with you, Mr. Starbuck.
I have no reports.
All right, Councilmember Cordova. No reports. All right, Councilmember Ball?
Oh, I definitely have something to say here. I'll start with yesterday, yesterday. Okay, yesterday was 17th, Monday, just another day in Lompoc, except that we had visits from our congressperson, Congressman Salud Carvajal. We had, at the same time, Senator Monique Lamone from the state, Supervisor Joan Hartman, myself, the mayor participated, and we were invited to all sit onstage at the Lompoc Theater and be presented with what is hopefully the first of many discussions on how in the world can we figure out how to collaborate between all of us, all of these different resources, and put our heads together to help push it over the top? How can we get something vibrant and restored in downtown? So there's no commitments yet, there's nothing set in stone, but this initial discussion is very exciting, and it just reminds me that, hey, it's such a big boulder to push up the hill, but if we can all put our heads together and find those resources in places we haven't looked before, who knows? Maybe the future can be bright for that. So I'm very excited, and if you haven't paid attention or looked at some of that stuff, definitely dig back in and see, you know, and follow what's happening with that. I think that can be very exciting. We'll see. The only other thing that I wanted to mention, and I won't read the whole thing, but I got to attend my first, because I'm a newbie-ish, Employee Service Recognition event, and it's hosted by the city for city employees. The last time they did this was 2018. The last time they did this was 2018, so now after pandemic, they brought it back. And I have to say, I know we've lost a lot of staff and we've had some turnover, but somehow, some way, we've kept quite a few people for many, many years. And I can't read all the names, but I just wanted to give a couple shout-outs because a few of you are in this room. We have people, we had three people get awards for being with the city of Lompoc for four years. I was two when they started. That's just mind-blowing to me. And then there are several police officers that we have here that have been here for 15 years, 20 years, and even though they had a lot of stresses over the last few years, I just want to say thank you to all of those who have stuck around, who have taken a hit because they could have easily gone to Santa Barbara and gotten a big bonus and lots of time off, but they've stuck with the home team, and I really appreciate that. And one more thing, for those that, you know, we hear a few people in the town say that, yeah, if you don't live in Lompoc, you can't help this community, and that's the only threshold. You've got to live in Lompoc. Well, I just want to point out something, and he's in the room, and I've already given him props before, but Mr. Guerrero, Mario Guerrero, 20 years with the city of Lompoc, working on our parks, now he's in charge of Parks and Recreation. This gentleman, single-handedly, when everyone else is distracted, there's not enough resources at the city, he kept his eye on the ball, and that was a three-plus, at least, million-dollar grant for Beatty Park to be renovated and to have that new playground equipment. And it all came full circle for me to, as I mentioned last time, to go to the park and watch so many people enjoying that space. And it's the thoughtfulness of employees that have dedicated their time and their work-life to Lompoc. So there's many other names on here that deserve recognition. They're all valuable to the city, but I just want to give a shout-out to all those behind the scenes that work really hard and actually create, in some ways, a lot more results than we do. I just want to say thank you for all of your service. That's it.
All righty, Councilmember Vega.
Hard to beat, Jeremy, hard to beat. Anyway, I did want to also applaud the employee recognition luncheon was really, I think it was pretty exceptional, you know, to see everybody recognized. You know, once upon a time, there was a mentality here that, that we only, you know, most people move in their jobs similar to houses every seven to 10 years. That's not really what I'm striving here for city council, as far as the city employees here. I'd like it to be a stable job, that if you wanted to stay here and work, that there is job security here. So my mentality is a little different. You know, I'm hoping that everyone that works at City Hall, and if they choose to stay here for, you know, as a career, that they're able to if that's their choice. So I don't look at it as a temporary position, so I think we're moving in the right direction. So, and by the way, the people, all the staff that were servers and Dean's jokes, Dean, what is that, a couple jokes? Anyway, so, and the people that barbecued and did the food, man, that was an excellent job. I want to, kudos, man. You know, you hang some food out there and you'll get some people out there, right, Chief? True story, huh? Thank you.
I keep telling Councilmember Starbuck that having a timer that tells me I got three minutes isn't going to make anything change, so, in fact, it might cause me to talk for longer just to, you know, annoy him. But, yeah, we, we, it's not my sand. The employee appreciation luncheon, we skipped a year because of the pandemic, and so it was great to bring everybody together. And yes, staff did the barbecue with some amazing food, so if, most of them were from the wastewater department, so be careful because they have another career, and we don't want to lose them because we need the wastewater department to run really well. Someone who was not there and missed getting his 10-year pen because he has been on council for 12 years is Mr. Starbuck, so I want to congratulate him for his 10-year pen because he wasn't there, so we didn't get to harass him like we harassed each other for the day. There were air horns, there was cheering. It was, it was a wonderful thing to be able to get together and honor our employees because we sit up here and make decisions, but we depend on all of you to go out and implement them, and that's the hard work. So thank you for making us look good, because without you, we, our decisions wouldn't matter. We just, they'd be hollow because we couldn't execute on them. So thank you, thank you to all of you, whether you worked for us for 40 years or three weeks. You're all appreciated. I also attended the Santa Barbara County, Channel County's Quarterly City Mayor, City Manager and Mayor Meeting, the United Ways Northern Santa Barbara County Mayor's Gala was last weekend. They're rolling out a new program that will be implemented in Lompoc as well called Literacy 2.0. They have, for years, provided books to, I believe it's third grade, and help with literacy. They're rolling out a financial literacy program to fourth graders. Lompoc schools will benefit from this. They will do a match of $44 to start a savings account and teach not only the kids but the parents financial literacy, how to manage their money, and that's a really exciting program because we really need that lesson to help us move our equity for our community forward. So I thank them for investing in our community. I attended the Utility Commission, great continued conversations about concerns over the solid waste rate increase that will come back before us. SB CAG, the Santa Barbara County Area of Government, which I serve on, held a reception for the California Transmission Commission, which is a statewide commission that makes decisions about funding for our highways, that they held their meeting in Santa Barbara last week. I was down at that reception and got to sit with some of those decision-makers and pick their brains on how do we move Robinson Bridge forward, and, but also the Highway 1 expansion and improvements that are being made. I had my monthly meeting with Joan and Dean for the Board of Supervisors, attended my third module for the Champion Institute, which is a nationwide cohort regarding complete streets. There's only 20 members from across the nation, and it's been really interesting so far, and I'm gathering information to bring back to council and staff about how to implement and do right by our multimodal plan for H and Ocean as well as our pedestrian and cycling plan. And then, as Jeremy mentioned, I spent the day with our electives from the county, state, and federal level, really educating them on our community, not just the theater, but other opportunities in it, and building those relationships, and thanking them for the support that they have either delivered to us or are in the pipeline from appropriations. Couple of big things going on. Saturday is Make a Difference Day. City puts on this day. It starts at nine o'clock. Show up at 8:30 at the Corporate Yard, that's on West Laurel, if you need the exact address. Let's see, the exact address is 1300 West Laurel. It's between R Street and V Street. You'll get your assignment for different projects around the community. It's a great opportunity to come out, get to know your neighbors, help clean up the community, and spend the day making a difference. So please, please join us for that. I'll be out there and get my assignment. I've already mentioned the Human Service Commission's funding and the workshop that's needed. Lompoc's next year is our 105th, 35th birthday, and there is now a logo contest that all ninth through 12th graders are able to enter to help design the logo to celebrate our 105th birthday next year. So if you would like to submit a design that will be utilized for the inspiration for that logo, please submit to thecityoflompoc.com/logoart by November 18th, 2022. The rules are there, so go participate. I look forward to see the creativity I know our students have. I know it seems early, but parade applications are due, you got till Monday, November 21st, so don't hesitate. And SATM visits on the 16th through the 19th. You can get more information on the city of Lompoc's recreation page. Those appointments fill up really fast, so go visit that. And last but not least, Halloween is just around the corner, and the Chamber has organized an amazing Old Town Trick or Treat on the 29th, Saturday, from 1 to 3. There's a map on their website, all the locations, you can go down in costume and trick-or-treat, and then, you know, get candy out ahead of, you know, the Monday night festivities. And then the reminder is Halloween is on a Monday this year. Please be safe. Please watch out for kids in our community. They're very excited to come out and have a full Halloween after the pandemic, and so we will see lots of our families and kids out. So remember to drive slow that Monday evening when you're getting home from work. Watch out for kids darting between parked cars, and take a flashlight with you. It may not be part of your costume, but it's an important part of the safety, so be sure and have that with you. Thank you all again for participating tonight, for the difficult decisions we continually make, and for the cooperation that this council has developed. It's, it makes it an honor to serve with you, not just an honor to serve on council. So we will adjourn till our next regular meeting at 6:30 PM here in council chambers on November 1st, 2022.